Today is the Globe Council Candidate Forum. It's presented by the Globe Miami Regional Chamber of Commerce. And we appreciate Globe for letting us have it here, but we are the sponsors. We're going to start off first with Steve Stratton talking about Proposition 46. So we're going to have a briefing on that and then we'll start our candidate review.
Thank you, Mayor and Council and citizens. I have to tell you this afternoon when Mr. Jepson called me, I was quite flattered and surprised that they asked me to speak tonight. I hemmed and hawed for a few minutes and my first response was, "I'll do it if I don't have to dress up. I've become spoiled in my retired life here." And so contrary to my friends' belief, I am wearing a collared shirt and no hat, so I am dressed up tonight. I'll talk to you a little bit about the alternative spending limitation. I will tell you that when I was a city manager, I advocated for that every time it came up. It allowed me to do things for citizens that would help their quality of life. And it allowed the council to direct me to do things that affected quality of life for our citizens in the community. Contrary to proper belief, it is not an increase in taxes. It is, however, the ability to spend the revenues that you receive. That makes a big difference. They still, they being the council and the administration, still have to maintain a balanced budget. They cannot exceed, the expenditures cannot exceed the revenues. If they do, we as citizens can hold our feet to the fire, not only in elections, but also during a term of any own and the city manager. The city has always done well with this. They've always followed the guidelines. I believe it's more prudent that we decide as the city of Globe how much we spend rather than the state giving a formula and telling us how much we'll spend. It just doesn't make sense, somebody sitting in Phoenix telling us how much we can spend. It's not right. As long as those things are in place that will prevent any abuse of this, I will always support this. I never, ever tell anybody how I voted on anything other than my wife. I will tell everybody tonight, I early voted and I did vote for this. It's the proper thing to do, it's a good thing to do. It's the best thing to do for the citizens of Globe. So I would ask you to support it. If you haven't voted already, vote and vote for this proposition. I'd be happy to answer any questions from the people here or the people watching on TV, if there are any.
I have a question. Mr. Stratton, thank you for your explanation of 406. I do have one question. From your experience and what you know of, the state has a formula that mandates certain expenditure limits. Is that formula, is it a moving formula? Is it a set formula? Is it a standard formula that's set and has never been adjusted? Or does it get adjusted?
I'm going to answer your question. I'm also going to defer to Mr. Jepson since he's more current on some of these things. It's my understanding that it's a moving formula with the cost of living index. And it is adjusted, however, it's still someone in an office in Phoenix or a group of people in Phoenix telling us how much we can spend. That just rubs me the wrong way. We and you know what our people need and it affects the quality of life.
The only addition is population growth and cost of living.
Population growth and cost of living, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
And Steve, I have one comment also. I know I got calls on, when they were doing the early ballot, what is alternative expenditure limit? You know, everybody knows his home rule, so they need to understand that's the same thing. Home rule is alternative.
Absolutely the same thing. Excuse me, I didn't mean to interrupt, but it is absolutely the same thing. It's referred to synonymously, so it is the same. It depends on how it's put on the ballot.
Thank you.
Thank you, and I do appreciate, I really am flattered that you asked me to speak tonight. So, thank you.
Thank you, Steve.
Thank you, Steve.
Okay, we're going to start off with introductions for anyone that may or may not know our existing and our challenging members here. So, Mr. Rios, if you could go first.
Sure, thank you. So my name is Freddie Rios. I'm a lifelong resident of Arizona. I was born and raised in a mining community of San Manuel, which is about 45 miles north of Tucson. Graduated there from high school, continuing further education in Tucson. Was fortunate enough to be able to earn an associate's degree in corrections. Shortly after that, I married my wife, who I'm still married to, Norma. And we lived in San Manuel for quite some time, where I gained employment through a water utility company in the area, and they're statewide. And I've been with the company for 36 years now in the water utility industry. So I've managed to be able to earn positions in that capacity of the industry and with the company, where currently I'm a division manager now for the division here in the Miami Globe area and also in the Oracle-San Manuel area, Saddle Brook Ranch, which is known as Falcon Valley. I have two kids, a son Freddie and a daughter Leah. My son Freddie has graduated from Arizona State University. He currently works at Knight Transportation in their corporate office and is doing quite well with them, been with them for about eight, nine years now. He has two daughters, Audrey and Avery, respectively six and three, and his lovely wife Adriana, who by the way is from the Globe Miami area. It's ironic that they met in Phoenix, but they're both from this area, so that's kind of nice. I have roots here in Miami Globe. My dad was born here in 1930 in Miami, lived here as a young boy, and then his family moved back to Mexico. And then when he was 16, he came back to the United States and retired as a miner and raised his family. So we were born and raised, most of us, in San Manuel. My older brother was born in Ray Sonora, which is now an open pit mine. Other than that, you know, I've enjoyed my stay here. I've been in Miami Globe for 16, going on 17 years now, and I see Globe Miami as my home. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor?
Yes, my name's Al Gameros, and I'm seeking a second term for mayor. I know I'm unopposed at this spot, but I feel that, you know, if the residents have questions, then I'm willing to answer any of the questions they have. I'm a lifelong resident of Miami. I was born and raised in Miami, graduated from Miami High School in 1974, a vandal. I've been married for 45 years to my wife Irene. We have three children, my daughters Monica, Nicole, and my son Freddie, and we have five grandchildren. Right out of high school, I went to work at Pinto Valley Mine, which is now Capstone Mine. It was a new mine then, just had opened, and so I went to work right out of high school. I bid into an apprenticeship at 18-years-old and was awarded an apprenticeship and went through school for four years, serving apprenticeship and getting my degree in diesel technology. I worked my way up to a foreman status prior to leaving there. I worked there 12 years. Early 80s, late 70s, I got interested in volunteering for the Central Heights Fire Department, and that caught my attention and that is where I wanted to go, even after getting my diesel degree. I went to school, started going to school, getting my fire certification, my EMT. So in 1986, I was able to bid or test for Globe Fire Department where I was hired, and that's where I spent the next 30 years with the Globe Fire Department. 18 of those years, I was a fire chief there. The last year and a half, I was promoted periodically to the interim city manager in the absence of the city manager. That's where I learned a lot of what the rest of the city, what it did, public works, police, all other departments. It was very interesting. And in my last six weeks, eight weeks of employment with the city of Globe, I was appointed the interim city manager. He had left our community, we're looking for a new city manager. And that was a lesson to learn. I don't think I would want to do it. It was a, it's a, that's a tough position. And I think we have two city managers in here and it's, everything changes like every 10 minutes, so it's, you know, but I did learn a lot and I was grateful for that. Year after retirement, I went ahead and ran for mayor and was successful in that, and that's where I'm at, I'm at the end of my first four years. Thank you.
Mr. Pastor?
Thank you. First of all, I want to thank the chamber for putting on this candidate forum. My name is Mike Pastor. Many of you in the community know who I am. I've been here all my life and I've been a resident of the Globe District Two for 33 years, born and raised in Miami, and actually been a resident 43 years. My wife nods to me that I got that wrong. I was appointed to this seat in November and have served the past eight months and found it to be a really great learning experience. And my intentions are that I want to continue, that's why I'm running. I think there's a lot of things on the table for the council that are going on right now. There's a lot of changes coming in the future, and I think they're positive and very progressive. And with my interactions with the current council, I've been very productive and I believe that we are going to make our community a great place to live in. I'm married to Linda for 47 years. We had a small business in Globe for 25 years, Linda's Beauty Salon, formerly Gloria's Beauty Salon, so very, I'm sure many people remember her. We have two adult children with eight grandchildren, and don't ask me to give their ages because I can't. They go from this range to 10-years-old, so I think it's 27? Nope, okay, well I got that wrong. But anyways, they, let's see, they all live in the valley. We have three who live in Utah, who we don't get to see as often as we like to, but we do make sure we visit with all of them all the time. I'm currently the coordinator at the Miami Regional Training Center for Hila Community College. The training center down there is involved with workforce development programs, welding, building trades, upholstery, machining, and this year we hope to start a fab lab program that the civet program, we partner with the civet program through the high schools, which are the high school juniors and seniors who come down and take those workforce development classes for two years. Let's see, I was employed with Freeport-McMoran for 35 years. Of course, I started with, I think, Inspiration Copper, and then we became Cypress Miami Mining, and we became Phelps Dodge, and when I finally retired after 35 years, it was Freeport-McMoran. I've served on the Globe School Board for approximately nine years. I've served on Hila Community College Governing Board for four years, and I served as board supervisor for eight years and the chairman for five years. And I look forward to serving the city of Globe for another four years.
Thank you. Mr. Schinder?
Hello, my name is Dan Schinder, and we're relatively new here. We moved here December 1st of 2016 after discovering Globe on a surprise trip. I brought my wife on three months prior, which was three months right after we moved to the Phoenix Valley from Las Vegas. We wanted a change and she was offered an opportunity in the valley. And after coming to Globe, we decided to come here for lunch for a few weeks in a row, and when she blurted out the words, "I want to move to Globe," that was weird. And we were already in love with the city, the history and everything. We're both history buffs and we have three businesses that we operate out of our home. We literally can live anywhere in the world. We've been to Canada, we've been to France, we've been to Mexico, we've been all over the United States, we've been to Singapore, we've been to Japan. We've looked at homes in Thailand, and every time we get excited about something else, we say, "Yeah, but it's not Globe." We've been together 13 years, don't want to speed that up, 13, not 18, 13 years. We have a blended family of 11 children, adult children, 25 to 43, 19 grandchildren, two years that are 20-years-old. I could name them, but I won't for the sake of time. I grew up in Los Angeles, she grew up in the Bronx. We met in Las Vegas after I moved there in December of 2007. I have two businesses, one is a media company in the music industry, and within one year I achieved 900% more online reach and engagement than all my media peers combined. And those were companies that had been around for 20 to 40 years that didn't have figured out, but the new guy on the block was able to figure it out in the first year. So I opened up a company teaching companies how to do what I've done, and that's build communities online and drive traffic to buy and do whatever. We absolutely, as I mentioned, love it here. We've done a lot of volunteering. I'm on the board of directors for the Cobra Valley Youth Club. We've both been in ghost tours, the cemetery tours. She's been in a few productions at the Center of the Arts, donated time for a while to the Humane Society. I just left a board position with the National Speakers Association to free up more time on city council and be part of the community more. And I thank you very much for having us all.
Thank you, thank you very much. First question I'm going to ask Mayor, Mr. Mayor. What are your expectations of the council people who work with you on the city council?
The expectations of our council is to, you know, I've been fortunate. I think we have a diverse group of individuals and very progressive, and we need to be able to address the issues within the city, but we also need to, our main goal as a council was to develop or promote economic development. You know, we, for years, have gone and circulated the same tax money that we operate all our departments with, and it just isn't enough with costs going up. And the only way we're going to promote and be able to bring additional revenue to our community is to be able to promote economic development. So expectations is that we all have a unified voice, a unified vision as to what our city and our expectations are, our goals, and that we want, we would like to see our staff make those things happen through our vision. And we have an amazing staff, we have amazing employees, and we've come a long way. And the group of people that I've worked with, the council, yes, we don't always agree with everything, but in the end, you know, we put it behind us and we move forward. But our vision has to be unified for our city.
Great, thank you. Mr. Pastor, how do you meet the expectations of the mayor and how are you going to represent the people in your district?
Could you speak it a little bit louder?
Oh, sorry. How are you going to meet the mayor's expectations and also represent the people in your district?
Well, I believe, you know, the expectations of the whole community is to see the community grow economically, like the mayor says, economic development is a key program for the city. Also, there's a need to make sure that we're providing adequate services for all of our citizens in the community. So as far as being, meeting the mayor's expectations, although we're seven different individuals up here, we tend to pretty much negotiate, communicate to each other, and resolve any of the issues that come up about it, but I think we're all in agreement of economic development. We're very progressive thinking, I would think. It's what would be a good classification for this council. We've just annexed 27 acres out at the community center that we have a developing company looking at representing the rest of the community, working together with the mayor and fellow council members, as well as of course District Two. And I believe that I absolutely bring to the table a unique set of skills from my business acumen of being able to market like a rocket and build communities and bring attention to Globe to take advantage of OPM, other people's money. And that's getting more people here to visit, spend money staying here, eating at the restaurants, going to the museums, making donations, buying at our retail stores, different things like that. And if we took even just a tenth of a percent of the Phoenix Valley alone, that's $54,000 a month if we had a tenth of a percent of the people visit us every month, even once a quarter, that would be great. And for a small community like that, that's a lot of dollars. It's a lot of bed tax. That doesn't even include them spending the night. That's $100 per person for a little day trip. So my skill set speaks to being able to bring people here and really bolster what is rich here in history and community, and I think that that's very important. People have asked me about working with other people, and I have clients in 20 countries. I have online meetings with people in several countries every week, and I've learned for the last 30 years, working with people of different cultures, religious beliefs, spiritual beliefs, different political views, different social strata, how to get along with people. And while I am very much a team player, I also will be very vocal if I don't agree with something, even if I'm the odd person out, and if I'm the only person that is really strong about something, I'm the only person, I will still stick to how I feel. And I think that that's important.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Mr. Rios? How do you meet the mayor's expectations and also represent the people in your district?
Well, you know, a lot of what's said here is, you know, I can echo, but specifically to meet the mayor's expectations, obviously communication with mayor on his vision and his goals, and obviously if they're in alignment with what I believe to be within my goals and my vision, that's an easy thing to, it's an easy thing to have happen, because when you're in alignment, then the only, the only thing that you really need to talk about is how do we get there and what do we need to do to get there? If there are things that I feel that the mayor needs, would, I would like to share with the mayor on a point of view or an experience I may have, mayor is very open to that and always has been. And so I think meeting his expectations is fairly simple because he's such an open-minded person that he's willing to not only deliver a message, but to receive comments. And so in that aspect, that's how I think I can and what I've done in the last four years, and I believe I've achieved that in meeting mayor's expectations. On behalf of District One, obviously we have constituents that have concerns, and they come to me, obviously, as they should, and I welcome that. If it's something that I can work through the system of talking to the city manager, if it's a city manager item, then that's who I go to. If it's a political item or something of higher interest, I will call the mayor. And the mayor has called me when constituents of mine have reached out to him. So I think it's been a good work relationship in our ability to work together, to work and aid him in his vision and goals. But it's also worked well because the mayor is open to listen to what certain districts' situations are and concerns are, and he entertains those thoughts and communications. Thank you.
I'll start with Mr. Pastor on this one. I'm going to skip around a little bit. Given the possibility, because we don't know the future and it's, this coronavirus has lasted a lot longer than we thought, and I commend the mayor on your leadership that you have provided through this, I really appreciate that personally. I have to tell you, I do. When I look at the rest of the world, I think we're doing a pretty good job here in Globe. But as we have to make some interesting and hard decisions going forward on budgets and potential cuts, Mr. Pastor, what would you identify as your top priority to keep or increase funding for?
Well, with this condition that we're dealing with, obviously it's, we're not seeing as much revenue coming into the community as we would like to under normal circumstances. We're fortunate that there's been, the federal government has provided what's called CARES money to the city, which is a significant amount of money which is going to allow the city to maintain. We have adopted our budget just recently. It was adopted at $33 million. Of course, that's not the kind of money we're going to spend, but that's how budgets are developed, so you have wiggle room if you get more revenue. This year, the finance department and staff developed a budget, which we call the COVID budget, and we call the normal budget. And it's two different budgets, and what we looked at was about a 20, about a 22% less amount in revenue for the COVID budget. And then we based the second budget, which is a, it's not the real budget, it's just a budget that we may be able to adopt to if everything happens in the next year and gets well and we go back to normal. With COVID budget, we're able to maintain our level of services. We haven't had any, we haven't had to lay any of our people off, we've continued working. And with the CARES money, we've been able to absorb it into various departments and able, we're able to purchase equipment that is, it's been very necessary and very important to having, such as in the police department, the fire department, and we've even been able to provide some equipment that will be cost savings for us in public works department. So we're aware of the problem. We know that we're not going to make the revenue that we normally make, and we've adjusted our budgets for that, and I think we're going to be okay. Thank you.
Dan, what would your priority be if you?
I'm sorry, I've, like I said, I have 11 kids and 19 grandkids. I can't hear very well. What did you say?
With the possibility of budget cuts, what do you identify as your top priority to keep or increase funding for?
Definitely public safety when it comes to law enforcement and the fire department. I know that we have issues, especially after fires and a long season of dryness where there's a lot of deadened down brush, and then we get the flooding, we get the big rains, we get the monsoons, and it takes a lot of manpower to clean up those areas that are key to prevent us from flooding over in some of the lower plain areas of our, of our community. So to me, that is very important. I'd also like to see money, a little bit more money. I don't know how much is going in now, but I'd like to increase programs for youth to keep them on track and keep them from going down the wrong paths. This is not uncommon for smaller rural areas for kids and youth to get bored, older teenagers even, and go down the wrong path. I'd love to see programs in place that I'd be more than willing to help head up, that have to do with the culinary arts, horticulture, gardening, things like that, that'll keep their interests and maybe even be the spark to career paths, things like that. The other, of course, is marketing, marketing, and more marketing. One of the advantages we have in our area is that we are not in Phoenix Valley, we are not in Tucson. We are a destination for those people to get away from where they are and come up here, get some fresh air, when it's not too smoky from the fires of course, but a little bit cooler, a little bit more small-town feel, a taste of history, and to get them to spend their money here. With all that's being done, which is great as far as marketing Globe, there is so much more that can be done that I am more than willing to bring my skills to the table and train Linda and the staff on some more aggressive things we can do to get more people here to spend their money.
Thank you. Mr. Rios? Thank you. Mr. Rios?
Well, you know, COVID has really turned all of our worlds upside down, and, you know, we really don't know what the new normal is. We don't know when it's going to be fully developed or not. And so, you know, with that, we take it a day at a time, and we take it an event at a time, or a process at a time. But I think it's important that the city understands and knows that this current council, which I'm a part of, as Mr. Pastor said, is, through our city manager, has created a couple of different scenario budgets. And knowing that revenues are not going to be what we're used to seeing, because of that, we've created budgets to continue to move the city along. As things relax, there are things in place to soft-open certain things, libraries and such, you know, restaurants, and I know that Governor Ducey has some say in what happens in the cities, but the cities and the mayor also have some say in what happens, as far as relaxations, and tightening up for that matter. To answer your question specifically, I believe that whatever budget we work under, we must provide services to the community. Those are the priorities. Fire, police, public works, water, sewer, trash, those are the quality-of-life things that we all expect and we want. And those are my priorities. Whatever budget it is, we must put those at the top, so that our citizens, whether they're hunkered down, whether they're having to self-quarantine, or whether they're able to get out and shop, we must provide those quality-of-life services that everybody expects. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor?
And one more time on the question, I want to make sure I got it right.
I get ADD-ish and go off. With the possibility of budget cuts, and it's nice, it's very refreshing to hear that you have two budgets, the Plan A and Plan B, and I'm sure does E. What do you identify? Oops. I lost my question. What do you identify as your top priority to keep or increase funding for?
Okay, my top priority, again, as mentioned earlier, COVID has really turned everything upside down in what we're doing. I think my top priority would be that we continue to offer all the services that we offer to our residents, and that is that we have to maintain, and I think our priority is that we do not lay anybody off within our city staff, any of our employees, that we continue all of them, they are very important to providing those services. So that would be a top priority for that. Before that, you know, we started, I think our priority, my priority is still going to be economic development. We began with economic development two years ago, we built the momentum, and then we hit this COVID. And then our Economic Development Department turned into more of helping business people, or the business, try and recover or try and help them through this pandemic. They helped them through the PPE, the Payroll Protection Program, the SBA, the Small Business Association Loans, and that is where we reached out to our business people, so they were successful, so they could continue on and hopefully open again after this is all done with. I think our budget, we anticipated a large hit, I think we were talking about 32% hit in our last quarter in our budget, and it didn't get that high. We didn't do as bad as we anticipated, which was a good thing. So we still had a lot of people coming to our area, we had people, which was pretty interesting, our locals were not traveling to go buy somewhere else, we were buying more local, and we could, we saw that with our sales revenue and our taxes, so that was very important. Obviously, we had some tough decisions to make, closing the library, closing BASH, closing the Active Adult Center, but we're working at getting them back, you know, if we can get these numbers and get the numbers down from the COVID, and bring it under some kind of control, that we can get these services back to our people. And then we want to be able to get our businesses that are closed, our gyms, our bars, and stuff like, our restaurants are still at 50%. We need to work at getting those, those are priorities for our community. And the way we're going to do it is through economic development. And even though COVID has hit us, we still entertain every week on a regular basis investors, developers that want to come to our community. We're still selling buildings downtown, so people want to come to Globe still, even through this pandemic. So I think, once we get going again, that we're going to build that momentum again and get back to where we were in the beginning.
Thank you. Mr. Schinder?
Yes?
What do you believe are the top two to three issues facing businesses in Globe?
Oh, definitely more revenue generated by more customers, and I know that that's a little bit more difficult than it's been, of course. When you look at the food service industry in town, you know, being relegated to take-out only makes a difference. A lot of people don't want to just do take-out, and then by the time they get home, it's just not the same as getting it brought to your table and then you eat it right away. So I know that's affecting businesses. It's also removing the dining experience. And then, of course, retailers I know are suffering, there's a lot of people that, for whatever reason, are still against the mask mandate, which I don't understand, I don't see it any different than a speed limit. You'd never say, oh, that's impeding on my rights, I'm going to go 70, even though it says 30. So I know that that's a challenge for local businesses as well. And again, I really believe that bringing more people here from outside our area as well, as well as campaigning people who live here, to people living here, to go and be patrons of our local businesses, and make them understand that that's what's going to help our community keep working and bring revenue. We all need to be flexible, we all need to be adaptable, and that's what's going to help us flourish. So that's really the biggest thing for me when it comes to the local businesses, and being able to keep them open and not have to keep using, you know, living check-to-check from CARE money and other funds, and, you know, covering their employment checks. We want them to thrive, not just get by, because it's going to be like this for a while. This is not temporary as in short term. So it's very important that the, big part of the solution is that we are customers to our local businesses, and we embrace that, and spend our money there, and bring more people here from out of town to do the same. Lastly, the other thing is to bring people here, like my wife and I, who will be transplants, and buy property, buy rentals, buy homes that they'll live in, raise younger families, even retirees, and as well as open businesses, and fill some of the vacant places that we have downtown and in and around the area. There is plenty of room for businesses, and I also think we need to make it easier for new businesses to open. I think there's some things we could probably loosen up to make that process quicker and easier.
Thank you. Mr. Rios, what do you believe the top two or three issues facing businesses in Globe are?
Well, number one being COVID, obviously. You know, it's just changed the whole dynamics of how business works and how business runs, and how people migrate and move freely and spend money. You know, there's, we're fortunate in this community, for the most part, that most of the people are still employed, you know, through the mines, through the schools, and through governments, the service industries along US 60 and so forth. So with that aspect, we're fortunate that we still have people working. However, in order for a business to thrive, and we all know this, that they have to have patrons. And that's why I say COVID is number one, because it's really difficult for patrons to exercise what they're used to doing, dining, shopping, freely. There's now restrictions. For those that want to go through those restrictions, well, they'll do it. For those that don't, we lose that revenue and we lose that business. I also agree that we have to increase and find ways to have our visitors not only come to Globe, not as a pass-through, but stop and shop and stay. We've heard stories already of how people have come by and made it home, which is a great thing. And, you know, we have two main traffic thoroughfares from the two largest cities in this state, Tucson and Phoenix, and they come through Globe. If they want to go to the mountains, they come through Globe. If they want to go to the lake, they come, if they want to go for a ride, they come through Globe. Globe is definitely a destination of travel. What we need to do, and what we've been working on, is creating and finding ways to not make Globe a pass-through, but a destination to stop. Their thoughts on what we could do recreational-wise. So there's a lot of things on the plate, there's a lot of things on the table that we have been discussing for years, not too many years, but at least the years that I've been on council. And there are things from previous councils that have been pushed forward to these current councils that we're continuing to work on. But it definitely takes a lot of work, and it takes a buy-in from members of the community and investors. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor? Same question.
And I echo the same thing, that, you know, the main thing is the COVID and the loss of revenue right now to our businesses, and I'm glad that we are able to reach out, that we did have a department that was working on economic development, and we were able to switch and help these businesses out with these type of loans so they can survive. So that's our main thing, is that we need to make sure that they survive through this pandemic and get them back open. The other things that, another thing that I think of that we've worked on, because our council is very open-minded, very progressive, there's always been questions about our codes, questions about a permit process, questions about how a new developer, a new business coming in, how can we be more business-friendly to them as a city, so that we don't frustrate them and disappoint them, and then they get turned around and they don't open a business? So I think we've worked hard at trying to change, we definitely changed codes, as long as we stay within the bounds of the law, the permitting process, we have brought down prices because of costs that were associated with signed codes and stuff like that. And we've tried, and we've still got ways to go, we're still working at being a better, a friendlier city for businesses coming in. And the big key is communication, it truly is, you know. We, as a city, we had, we have other organizations that have been working hard at marketing, branding, and Air Chamber, economic development, but as a city, we really never did that in the past. We didn't take control of it, we didn't spend a lot of time on branding, on marketing our city, we didn't. And I was here 30 years, so I saw it, you know, we didn't, there wasn't a lot of revenue spent there. But I think it, you got to spend money if you're going to make money, and that's the only way we're going to get ahead.
Great, thank you. Mr. Pastor?
Like, everybody has commented about the need for economic development. The COVID really has restricted us, but our Economic Development Department, Ms. Adonero and Michelle, I don't remember Michelle's last name.
Jorkovich.
Jorkovich.
Jorkovich? Oh, okay. I thought it was Wheeler, wasn't it?
No, are you talking Melissa?
Melissa.
Steele.
Steele, yeah. Melissa Steele, I'm sorry. Both of them have really taken on a lot more of the contact to the businesses in this community, and they've done an excellent job. Linda has gone out and meets with the business owners, she tries to go see each one of the business owners in the community, let them know what the opportunities are, because the council supports her efforts in meeting with them and giving them that information as to what's available and how we can help them. Al mentioned some of the ordinances that we've looked at in the city over the last eight months that I've been here, there's been a couple that we've changed because they were hindrances. We were hearing from developers, the regulations are too strict, they're too complicated, and we need them simplified. We've been able to do that. We've, I was going to mention something, and I can't remember, so I'll just keep going on here. We are very much a business-friendly council, okay? We consider, a lot of our decisions, we think about how it's going to affect our businesses. I know just this past weekend, Linda was out with some local, a couple of different groups, there were two gentlemen looking at the Hill Street School, young gentlemen that wanted to develop some kind of a entertainment youth, young adult center up there, and Linda took them through a tour, and they were looking at it and everything, and offered them some information as to what they were looking for. Also, she was in the town of Miami with a couple of other, they were startup survey group, looking at different buildings in the community to see what was available. So we're moving forward, even though the coronavirus has slowed things down, we're looking at helping in our businesses. I think the mayor goes out and visits with businesses, so, you know, whatever we can do, we're here to try and help them.
Great, thank you. Okay, Mr. Rios, I'll start with you on the next question. As we've touched on, we're living in difficult times right now with the issues of coronavirus, racism, political polarization, dividing us as Americans. We see it everywhere. How would you, as a council member, provide leadership in our community to help bring us together?
Well, I think it's important that you, as a leader in the city, that you're a good listener, for one. Everybody has their opinion, everybody has their point of view, and everybody has their priorities. And so, if you can listen and address the things that can be addressed, the things that can't be addressed, as a leader, you have to go find the reason or the answer to whatever situation has come up. Because of the situation that we're in, I think tensions are high, higher than normal, and so emotions can lead and carry a conversation that really will not be productive. And so I think you've got to be able to take the emotion out and be a good listener, and listen to see what the actual problem or concern is. Get to the root of what the concern is. At that point, I think, as a leader, I believe as a leader, you can be more effective in delivering a message, and also be effective in your response to a constituent, a business, an organization, or even a governmental agency. You know, we all have policies and accountabilities that we have to live under, and if we can just filter through and take the emotion out of the stressful situation we're in, I think we can all make good judgments. And with that, you'll be able to best serve your community, your constituents, and even the outlying areas within your community. You can be viewed as a city that is grounded and still is not shaken by whatever forces are being pushed on them, and they can still migrate through this difficult time, because in the end, we're going to get back to a normal. We just don't know when that is. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor?
I think as leadership, we got to lead by example. In this COVID, you know, as we go through this process, especially this last proclamation with the masks, you know, we were hoping that it would have been a statewide mandate, which had made it easier for all cities in Arizona, but it wasn't. It was put on the shoulders of the mayors to make those decisions, whether they were going to mandate it within their communities. And, you know, I listen to a lot of data, a lot of science, I write down numbers every day as to what our community is doing, what our state is doing. I write down numbers every day as to what our community is doing, what our state is doing. And I feel that that decision was the right decision for our community. We had, even if it's a very, very small thing to do to try and see if we could slow this pandemic down. So leading by example, say we're gonna mandate masks, then we should be wearing a mask. And our city employees should be wearing a mask, our city staff. It should be mandated. I was glad to see that the large corporations, the Walmarts and the Fries mandated their mask within their businesses because that made it a lot easier, because we still have pockets of people that, and that's okay. We all have our own opinions and we respect each other's opinion. But it made it a little easier in that way. I think we should need to display ourselves as professionals, as we represent our city sitting up here and you viewing us. We need to be professional in what we do and have good discussions and make good decisions for our residents, not for ourselves, but for our residents. And I think listening to our residents is very important, being a good leader. I get numerous calls every day. And maybe we may not be able to solve their problem, but even if we just listen to these people, that's a very important part of what they want to hear. And not only, and we also need to get involved, not only local, I know we represent the city and council, but many of us are in different organizations that we go to locally, but also as a region. We need to look at expanding our participation as a region statewide to get, so it brings more advantage to our community, to our rural communities, because we need a rural community voice out there in the state. So just being more involved locally and being more involved regionally and throughout the state also.
Thank you. Mr. Pastor?
Thank you for the question. I think both the mayor and Mr. Rios said it the best way you can say it, is listen and communicate. I've been in the political arena for 20-plus years. School board, governing boards, county government and city government. And I've learned over those years, the most important thing is to listen to your constituents or listen to your taxpayers and communicate with them. You're not gonna solve every problem that's out there, but you're gonna be able to solve some just by listening and just by communicating. Okay? You can't please everybody and that's just the nature of the business. Especially right now with the COVID pandemic that we're dealing with. There are a lot of high-strung and a lot of emotional people out there. Why me and why not you, you know? That's the way it is. I mean, we've got to accept that we are living in a whole completely different environment. Okay? And not all of us are gonna agree, but we can listen and then we can communicate. And that's all I really have to say about it. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Schinder?
It's a great question because it's, there's nothing more topical. And we do need to listen. We absolutely need to lead by example. And we also need to look outside of our bubble. The most successful businesses do that. They defer to a consultant or they look outside at other successful examples. And we need to do that as well. One example for me would be that the last three years, my wife and I have spent some time on business in Singapore. Singapore is made up of three different race, main races, Malaysian, Indian and Chinese. There is no racial tension there whatsoever. It's the cleanest city slash country on the planet because the laws are so strict. It's a great example of just people working together and really fostering tolerance. And one of the things I've learned is we really all need to relax on criticizing people that we don't really know just because they don't feel the same way or they believe something that we don't or vice versa. And I think when we do that, it's gonna really help us adapt together and relieve a lot of social tension and a lot of racial tension. And again, like everyone else said, listening and communicating with the community and the community communicating with itself without criticizing each other just because they're not on the same page. That's just become a lot of nonsense and unuseful static energy that just has no positive value whatsoever. In traveling around the world, if there's anything I've learned is that we all really want the same thing. We all want to be healthy. We want our kids or grandkids, if we have them, to be healthy. We want a roof over our head, we want to live in a safe community. We all want that, no matter what country, city you choose. Sometimes we just see even within a given community, different ways to get there. And that's why we need to be open to different solutions. And again, sometimes looking outside the bubble and see what has worked elsewhere as well. But it really comes down to communication and transparency.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Mayor?
Daily basis, but it is a problem that we have, you know. I saw it in the fire service, you know, a lot of the calls that were responded to were homeless individuals that lived, you know, either under the bridge or on the streets. And that's a tough situation. And some people, you know, they just ran into misfortune and that's where they ended up. But it does need to be addressed. I don't know what the answer is, but they're human beings and we need to provide them with some type of service. There needs to be some kind of plan in place that we can help them out. And they're out there surviving on a daily basis. I mean, they're out in their heat, they're out in the cold. You know, and it's tough though, because then you start to help these people and some people may criticize it. They may not agree. I know one time when I was with the fire department, it was, I think the temperature was gonna be in the low twenties. So we went out and got some, we got rounded up some blankets and stuff. And we knew some people were staying down here close to Conigge Bridge. And we took them blankets for that night. And immediately I started getting calls at the fire department. Why were we were promoting these people to stick around in their communities and to live there? And really, all we were trying to do was trying to provide them with some more for the night. So it's a situation that needs to be addressed, not only in our community, but in all communities across Arizona. And I don't really know the answer. I think it needs to come as a state level, federal level, whatever it is, so we can help them all.
Thank you. Mr. Pastor?
Well, having a son who spent time out on the street for several years due to his mental issues, I know how bad that problem is and it hurts to see people out on the street that can't really take care of themselves. This was the first winter that I noticed people sleeping in the doorways of buildings downtown. And it was just sad. I mean, what do you do? Like Al says, you take them blankets, sometimes they'll take them, sometimes they don't want you to bother them. It's a situation that I think nobody really has an answer. I believe the town of Payson, city of Payson has a fairly decent homeless program that they've started where they have warming centers in the wintertime and water stations during the summer. I know some of the churches here, they have their little houses in the, at the parishes where people put water and socks and stuff like that in the little houses for the homeless. But that's not enough. It is a problem in this community and like Al says, I don't think anybody knows the answer. I mean, wouldn't it be great to have a building like they have down in the valley in some of the communities where the homeless people could go and you can provide them those services? It'd be great. But somebody has to take that animal by the hand and do it. And nobody, I don't think, really knows how to do that. And it really pains me to talk about it because it's a personal experience of myself. But, you know, it is a problem we need to look at eventually. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Schinder?
It is a very complex situation. And Globe is a microcosm of cities like Los Angeles, New York, Denver, Tokyo, Toronto. It really is a microcosm of that. We haven't escaped that. And as the mayor said, there are many different reasons. Sometimes it's hardship, sometimes it's addiction, sometimes it's mental health issues. And when there's an assortment of people that are in the same situation for different reasons, it is difficult to house them all together and treat them all the same because they're in that situation for different reasons. But it would be a beautiful thing if there was a way we could get state money or grants to provide some sort of facility, even if it was during the hottest months and the coldest months of our seasons. I think what the fire department did was great. And for people to complain about that is being selfish and short-sighted. And a lot of people, what do most people do when they see someone homeless? Especially if they're standing on a corner leaning against a building, yelling and waving their arms, they're afraid of them. No one wants to embrace and get to the root of the problem and see how they can help. They want to avoid it and pretend it's not there. And the first step in finding some relief for this situation is to look at it straight on and embrace it and find out, why are you in this situation and what can we do for you? Maybe they are totally fine and just need a job and a place to stay. Maybe they are, maybe it is a mental health issue. We all know that veterans have been in this position before for one reason or another. And it pains me that this country, with all the money we give to other countries for things, we cannot take care of our own veterans. And even if you look at a city of about 7, 7,200 people, we also have this problem. It's pretty ludicrous if you think about it. But I believe that it also touches on something I mentioned earlier, and that's being flexible, adaptable, and being intuitive enough to look outside our bubble and see how other cities may have found some path towards solution. Whether it's a smaller city like Payson or Sholo, or a bigger city like Los Angeles or Denver. There's gotta be some answers and there's gotta be some professionals that we can bring in to consult on something like that. But it's a terrible thing and the first step is really to embrace it. It's a problem and to be willing to do something about it.
Thank you. Mr. Rios?
You know, I echo a lot of what Mr. Schinder said. You know, our country with the wealth that we have, and this is not just a Globe problem, this is a national problem. By no means are we, are we not part of a cultural problem that we have. And, you know, for whatever reason, these homeless people have found them to be in these positions, you know, again, whether it be mental or hardship or just, you know, addictions, things like that. It's not a, it's not a one shoe fits all. We have different varieties of situations with homeless people. And it's, I think we do need to reach out as a city to those communities that have at least developed some programs to help in certain situations. I think the city can help in organization through contacts, through networking because of the capacities that city managers and mayors and how they're able to interact with each other and bounce things off each other. But, you know, if we can work with church groups and organizations that are willing to help in this situation. I don't know that we're gonna fix it. I just don't know that it can be fixed. But it's almost a case-by-case situation. As Mr. Schinder said, there's some, and the mayor said, there's some people that don't want help. They refuse the help. There's some people that are out there that really don't know what they want. But they find themselves homeless and living in cardboard tents under bridges. So I think as a city, I think we can help organize, we can help shape programs. But I don't know that it can be fixed. I think there's gotta be a huge community outreach. Like I said, church groups, you know, other organizations, help groups that are willing to take on some of those challenges. Funding is another thing that has to be considered. How are we gonna fund this? And where are the funds gonna come from? And I think we need to lobby with the state and to some extent the feds. If we can send billions of dollars overseas to help other countries, we should be able to fend for ourselves. There's no doubt in my mind, we should be able to do that.
Thank you. That was a tough question and you all were very gracious about it. Okay, let's go to a fun question. Mr. Pastor, in your opinion, what is Globe's greatest accomplishments in the last few years?
Having lived here for, I don't want to say the number, but I've lived in Globe for 43 years. Okay, I'll leave it at that. This is a great community. I've lived my whole life here. There's no other place I want to live. We've got everything that should be attractable to people who live in the cities and want to get away from that rat race. I mean, this is a great community. We have great nonprofit organizations, we have humanitarian organizations. The schools, people, it depends on who you are, so the schools are good schools. They're not, you know, perfect schools, but they're good schools. This is a great place to raise a family. We raised three children here, you know. My grandkids come here, they love it when they come here. Right now, there's not a whole lot of activities that we can do. I mean, the swimming pools are closed, you know. There's no softball or no Little League baseball going on. But, you know, hey, we go for walks. We go to Round Mountain, we do, we walk a lot of the city, I have a lot of city trails that my dog and I walk and the grandkids like to do that and just come up and visit, work in my garden. There's, it's a beautiful community and I wouldn't want to be anywhere else. And I just think that that's the most proudest thing I am. Now, the eight months that I've been on the board, I've learned a lot. There's a lot of huge opportunities for this community. A lot of things are gonna start popping once we get back into normal. And I'm looking forward to being part of that process.
Thank you. Mr. Schinder?
Obviously, I've been here the least, so I can't cite a lot of changes other than some things I've heard and some things that I've seen. I think one of the biggest things is people coming together and doing something like what Thea Wilshire spearheaded as far as taking lemons and making lemonade out of something like the Old Dominion Mine Park. I love going up there. I love seeing the old mining equipment. I had a client visiting back in December who makes drums for a living. And his past history of the 20 years before that was a blacksmith. He just was in, like in a candy store when I took him there to look at all the old equipment. And that's a community and a community member having the foresight to see that there's value in that. We've seen renovations done at the museums. Besch is just amazing. And my wife, Enja, and myself, thanks for coming, by the way, we had a community event every month for almost two years at our home. And we saw an evolution of more and more people feeling comfortable getting involved with that. We had an open mic night every month where people could come and sing, play music, read poetry, tell stories about how they got here, how their parents got here, how their grandparents got here. And we really, when we first did it, we had no idea what to expect. And at one point, we had 63 people jammed into, it might have been a night you were there actually, people almost hanging out the windows. It was, it was great. And I thought, oh no, the ex-fire chief is here, we're gonna get busted. It was pretty. But it speaks to the reason, the number one reason everybody we have spoken to since we moved here says, what do you love about Globe the most? It's the same thing my wife, Enja, and I love. And it begins and ends with people. So that's my perspective.
Thank you. Mr. Rios?
Would you please repeat the question?
You betcha. In your opinion, what is Globe's greatest accomplishment over the last few years?
Well, I feel like there's been quite a few and, you know, I may just touch on a couple. But there's obviously more than a handful, in my opinion, especially being on council for the last four years. But I think one of the greatest accomplishments that we've had is we did create an economic development department and a team. And although you may not see the fruits of that work, the groundwork, the platform has been built and is being built. And I believe if we, if we stay the course, we're going to start seeing and reaping the, the fruits of those, of those efforts. I can tell you, Mayor has been extremely active in outreach with other mayors in other cities. And, and our economic development team has visited other cities and communities, you know, to see how they were successful. You know, and I, I firmly believe in, you know, uh, if the will's already been invented, so we don't need to reinvent the will. We just need to find ways how to get there. And, and as long as you have a vision and a goal, then you can achieve those things. And so that's, I think that's one of the accomplishments that you may not see now, but you will see down the road. I think another good accomplishment is, is the, um, the work that, that we've done with our police department. We brought in a stellar chief of police. Uh, he's managed to not only change the culture had, but we've also changed, I believe, the community's perception of our police department in a good way. We're continuing to advocate for, for the police safety, but yet to have our police department prove to the citizens that they are there for the own good of the citizens, and they're not to be feared. So those are a couple of things that I, that come to mind. Uh, but I can tell you, the, the low lying fruit accomplishments are, are happening. And not everybody may recognize it or see it, because sometimes it's not just a visual, um, upgrade, but it could be an upgrade in, in communication, it could be an upgrade in, in accountability with forces, workforces, things like that. And I think all that accumulating together, um, will make a stronger city. And I believe we're on path.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor?
Some, uh, there's a couple of things. I'd like to start with, uh, infrastructure. Obviously, there's been a lot of work been done, two years and beyond with our city. Our city's a hundred plus years old, a lot older infrastructure. Um, some of the visible things that people see and, and they comment on is, is this road, the downtown, the, the new road there, Pine Street, I mean, the different streets. So the infrastructure that you see. But there's more to it than that. You know, we've installed water meters, pressure relief valves, new water lines in the ground, new hydrants. So there's a lot of infrastructure that takes place that people don't see. And we're talking millions and millions of dollars. And through the work of our staff, uh, they have gone, gone through on a lot of these projects, and some that may cost you a million, they get forgivable amounts, or even three million, we get forgivable amounts. So it doesn't cost us a full amount to do this infrastructure work. So for infrastructure was important. If we're going to try to build a community and trying to build economic development, we have to have the infrastructure. We have to be able to handle the, the increases what's coming forward. Economic development, uh, and a lot, everybody hit it, is, you know, we're just at the beginning. It's been two years in the process. We're at the base, and we're just starting the market. We're starting to get Globe's name out throughout the state, throughout, throughout, beyond the state. So it's important, but we've got to stay our course. Like Freddie said, we've got to be patient, and we will reap the benefits, maybe five years down the road, 10 years down the road, but we cannot stray from it. We've got to make sure that we continue to move forward with it. And the other thing I think we've done in the last two years, increased our communication and cooperation with the town of Miami, with the, with the county. Uh, we meet on a regular basis, we talk to each other, we've had combined council meetings with Miami. Uh, we've reached out, and now the mines, we, we meet with the mines now in more cooperation and talk. So it's about working together to help each other out and how we're going to fund projects and do things, because we can't do it as a city ourselves. We've got to work at it collaboratively within our community, and then we've got to go beyond, again, like I said, in our region, and reach out and be involved in different organizations that's going to help our rural community and bring more funding and exposure to us.
Great, thank you. Okay, now it's kind of time for closing remarks. Dan, do you want to start?
Sure. Um, like I said, my, my wife and I, we travel around the world on business. Someday, we'll do it for vacation. But the last few years, it's been business, and we have seen some amazing, uh, places. Um, and we can do what we do from anywhere in the world. And we've, we've been to Tokyo, we've been to Sato Island in the Sea of Japan, we've been to beautiful Koichi, Japan, which is rolling hills of agriculture and 800-year-old castles, and, uh, Chaussee in France, Toronto in Canada, all over the country. And we always get excited towards the end of the trip, knowing that we're coming home to Globe. It means so much to us. And that, this is a big passionate thing for me, because I, I have one personal agenda related to me running for city council. And I'm not running against Mr. Pastor, by the way. If I lived in a different district, it would be Mr. Rios, or it would be Mr. Lethem, or whomever. I'm running for the city of Globe because I do bring a unique set of skills to accomplish the things that I've mentioned. But it's, it's important to know that we, we need to all work together to accomplish these things, um, that we've talked about. And while I am the newer person on the block, I do believe in balance. And I'm the only person that could come into city council with some, the most fresh perspective and with some new skills from outside. When a company hires a new CEO or other C-suite level manager, they usually don't hire from within. They hire from another company. Why? Because they want to bring in those new perspectives and different skill sets and different sets of knowledge. And that's what I bring to the table, some skill sets, with all due respect, that no one else has. And I have a track record working with tourism. I have a track record of building huge communities online to get them to go to a destination. And in this case, it would be Globe, to either become transplants, like my wife and I, to start businesses or buy properties, or to have people come here and visit and spend money, earn their bed tax, a sales tax, uh, eating at the restaurants, buying at the retail, everything that goes with, with coming here. And we really need to do a better job of promoting the historic downtown. There's a small statue of a Globe that no one sees. There's a small sign that says historic district this way. I think we can do a much better job and give the people a bigger voice in the community for events like the city council meetings, and make sure they know that they're promoted and they can be a part of that. So, thank you.
Mr. Rios?
Uh, well, first of all, I'd like to, I'd be remiss if I didn't say this initially on my opening statement, but I, I do want to thank the, uh, regional chamber of commerce for, for putting this forum on, uh, to allow us to express our views and our feelings and, and have our, our citizens get to know us, um, for those that don't know us. And also, I failed to, I, I did mention that I had a daughter, but I failed to mention what she is and what she does. And I'm very proud, mom and dad are very proud of our daughter Leah. She's now a senior at the U of, oh, at U Arizona, uh, studying pharmaceutical science. And so we're very proud of her, and she's continuing to, uh, she's, she has her sights set on, uh, pharmacy school after that. So Leah, I apologize for not saying that earlier, but I caught it in the end. So, you know, um, this is, again, as most of you may know, I'm running unopposed, uh, this cycle or this term. Um, but I, I did run, uh, four years ago. And, uh, you know, prior to that, I sat in these council chambers about 95% of the time of council meetings, um, since 2012. Uh, so from 2012 to 2015, 16, I was sitting in the, in the audience, listening to council meetings. Um, and it was for, for an obvious reason, but after some time, I became engaged and interested in what city council is about and what they can offer to their citizens, because ultimately, I am a citizen of Globe. And so that's what inspired me to run. As I mentioned earlier, I've, I worked in a, I still work in a private utility business, privately owned. And so with the capacity that I have now, that I serve within the community, uh, within the company, um, I, I work very closely, I, uh, create and, and manage multimillion dollar budgets annually. Work closely with engineers, work closely with, um, government agencies in, uh, in regulations, in understanding regulations and, and things like that. So those qualities of running a business and how to run a business and how to manage a business, I believe, has helped me navigate through how cities are, are run. And that was a learning experience, believe me, and I'm still learning. There are certain things that are different in the city government than, than a private industry. But I can tell you that those values that I share with this council and, and city managers and, and staff, um, in learning and also showing them my, uh, my qualifications in, in how to manage these kinds of budgets and, and, uh, strategies and, and regulations and meeting, all that, I think has been very beneficial. And so all I can say at the end here is, if you believe that that's what you want in your city councilman, then validate that by voting for Freddie Rios. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, first of all, again, thank you, Christie and Diana, for Chamber Commerce for putting on this. I think it's very important that the residents hear our voice, uh, out here, if they have questions. Um, again, I'm running unopposed, but I do appreciate your vote. Um, I look forward to another four years, uh, sitting on this council. I, I truly have been honored and fortunate to work with such a group of, uh, individuals that, you know, that are really progressive and proactive and open to new ideas and new things and, and wanting to see changes within the community. So, so that's very important as we, as we move forward. Obviously, COVID is still going to be with us in this next however long, and it's a challenge that we're going to continue to face. And, uh, but we still want to move forward with the things that we already have started. And, you know, maybe we lost a little momentum, but we want to start and, and activate that momentum of going, going forward as we, as we do. I too, as Freddie did, I sat in council meetings for 18 years as a director. Um, and, and that's what interested me in running for council, uh, listening to, to the different, uh, styles of councilmen and mayors. Um, I, it did, it did impress me to, to want me to, to move forward. Um, again, I ran, because I, this is the community I grew up in. Um, when I began, when I, uh, started work here at the fire department, uh, in, in 86, I, I was excited with the fire service. And 30 years later, I was still excited the same day I left. So there was, my experience, my employment with the city of Globe was, and I, I had no regrets of what I did. I left a good job with the mines, came to the fire service, but I have no regrets what I did. So I want to continue to give back to the city. It gave me a career, and that is why I'm running again. And we, we have started a lot of things. We have a lot of ideas, we have new things coming forward. I just want to be part of that in the next four years. So I thank, uh, all the residents, uh, for your continued support, uh, as mayor for Globe. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Pastor?
Thank you. Uh, once again, I want to thank you guys, like everybody else, just thank you for putting this forum on. Uh, it's very important for the citizens of whatever government agency you're running for is to learn who the candidates are. And I think these are great opportunities to hear all the candidates and to let them present their views. Um, I've only been on the city council for eight months, but I've lived in Globe for 43 years, and I've been involved in government for 20-plus years. I think my experience helps me in this position. I've enjoyed the eight months that I've been with this city council. They're very progressive thinking, they're very, uh, open and communicative with each other. And I think our staff in, in the city of Globe, I've, I'm barely getting to know a lot of them, but they do a great job, and they've supported me for the last eight months, and I appreciate everything they've done for me. And I would just ask the voters to give me the opportunity to serve a full four-year term, uh, as our representative for District Two. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank, uh, all of you for your great answers, and it's nice to see so much experience up here. Um, I should mention that the candidates for District Five could not be here tonight, so Charlene Giles and Danny Rodriguez?
David.
David.
David Rodriguez, sorry, Mr. Rodriguez. Um, um, but they are on the ballot, so, um, please, if you're in District Five, you need to vote. And voting is tomorrow, so hope everyone, hopefully, everyone comes out. And thank you, um, City of Globe for letting us, uh, hold these here. We really appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.